Okay, that's Starby. I'm digging your collection of linen summer dress from this year.
Yeah.
On the plane.
Are the copies new?
Well, it's had batteries.
I don't have my phone. I would text here.
I do. Oh, put it on. Yeah, I'm down there.
Come down. I guess I'll do it down. Oh, it's here?
No, it's fine. Who's who's on Zoom? Derek.
Derek. So Derek, not Mark? Derek's okay.
Is my is. I mean, I know. Hey, Derek, do you hear us?
It's Mark.
Yeah, yeah, you guys. Thanks. I can hear you. I apologize. This this iMac is is ancient. It's really nice, but it doesn't. I don't have the video capacity on Zoom, so I apologize for that. So you get to stare at the Oregon coast and think about cooler temperatures, but yeah. But I can hear you.
Great. We can hear you, too.
Thank you.
So I have a text from Dave Pesci so that he's running a little bit late. He'll be here, so I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at six oh four.
So you're calling the meeting to order?
Uh huh. Uh, you want and you'll call you can call the planning part to order as well. Okay, yeah. Um, so we'll take a roll call for council, please.
Mayor Ayers flood.
Here.
Counselor Pari Miller. Counselor Byers.
Yeah.
Counselor Pescito. Be here shortly. Uh, counselor Greeter.
Right.
Greider. Not here. Uh, counselor Penamarev.
Here. Perfect.
Counselor Colay. Not here. Uh, planning commission, uh, Chair Riley, not here.
Part our part to order. Um, I'd like to call the city of Talent Plan and Commission to order at six oh five five. Roll call, please.
Chair Riley, not here. Uh, Vice Chair Shapiro.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hazel.
Here.
Commissioner Damato.
Here.
Commissioner Volkart.
Here.
And Commissioner Clark is absent. We have a quarrel.
Lisa, I'm happy to yield the agenda to you. So if you want to carry us through.
Sure. I did have a question about the agenda. So are we going to is it this agenda doesn't follow the normal guidelines of our.
Yeah, we're treating it as.
Okay, so I just wanted to talk about the minutes from our January February meeting has still not been approved. Will we do that after the joint session or will we?
That will be next next planning meeting exclusively. Yeah.
Okay.
So Jason, Commissioner Clark is present.
So, yeah.
So Nikki, we'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you so much for having me. Mayor, counselors, commissioners. I am Nikki Hart Brinkley. I am with Green Top Planning Development and Research. I am a geographic information systems analyst, and I specialize in questions about land use, typically within the Oregon regulatory context. I have been hired by the city of Talent to conduct a residential buildable lands inventory under a grant that has been provided by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. As I talk about the buildable land inventory, I will start saying B L I, so I'll use those interchangeably. And the grant is in two parts, and tonight's meeting concludes the first part, which is the creation and presentation of a draft buildable land inventory. After tonight's meeting, we'll move through a period of additional and final commentary on the draft inventory. So I'll continue to be accepting feedback through August first. And I will be going through this website that you see in front of you that I produced to walk us through this kind of complex piece of Oregon administrative rules. And B L I's are some of my favorite things to do because I think they're really valuable. I think they're really useful. So I'm excited to be a part of this. Thank you. Uh, as we move into phase two, phase two is going to be the final buildable lands inventory, and there will be one additional joint meeting upon completion of that final uh, inventory. So I'll be back here again to present you with the findings. Uh, what I'll be doing from now until we meet again is I'll be collecting all of the feedback that I've received through this process. I have had, uh, this is the third, uh, meeting. We met with stakeholders. Uh, we had a public open house, and I see some familiar folks from that. And now we're meeting again.
Sorry about that.
That's good. And now we're meeting again to make sure that everyone in the city knows that there is a way to learn about this and to provide feedback. Um, I also welcome you to get in touch with me um, individually or in non-quorum numbers. I'm happy to go over anything that we go over tonight in more detail if you do have questions. The website is really intended to make this entire process less opaque, more transparent, easier to understand. I really want you to feel empowered by this knowledge and not kind of, you know, here I've put all of your land in a black box and shook it up. And here's what came out. I really like your participation and. Um, so I'll be going through the website tab by tab, and I'd like to just introduce those right now so that you know what's coming up. Um, after I've gone through the information on each tab, I'll pause for questions. If there's a question that comes up that is maybe better saved for later on in a presentation, I'll ask you to hold that. You might have to remind me, um, because I get to talk in and get to it to roll. And so if I don't circle back to your question that I'd asked you to hold, please do remind me. Uh, so initially, we're going to talk about what a buildable land inventory is and why it's important to do one now. Um, we'll talk about the current conditions here in talent. Uh, things like your comprehensive plan designations and your zoning and how that plays into deciding where your residential land is that I'm even analyzing. We'll talk about environmental and developing constraints. So this process looks at land, and it takes a whole bunch of land off the top that it considers unbuildable. And that's because we have a lot of different environmental constraints here in talent, um, mostly to do with waterways. There's a little bit of slope as well. Um, so we'll talk about how that impacts the buildability of land and also the development constraints beyond, you know, just environmental conditions. So things like buffers around riparian areas, uh, things like that, that are very specific to talent. We'll also talk about, um, this kind of second part of the buildable lands inventory. One of the things that I really like about the guidance, um, that this O A R offers is that we have this kind of prescriptive process. So you can go into a very large city and you can conduct a buildable lands inventory, and it won't take you 20 years to do. It won't take you $2 million to complete. It makes it a very manageable process. Um, but especially in a smaller town like talent, we really have the opportunity to dig a little deeper and do a parcel by parcel analysis of what is buildable and what is not. Uh, of course, within the the framework of the rules, but we can dig a little deeper, and that has been one of the things that I want to convey to residents, to business owners and to leadership here is that I will capture every single tax slot correctly. If there's something about your property, um, that you know is a development constraint. Let's say you've got, you know, a covenant on your property for, you know, a 50 foot buffer across the backyard. Um, because RVSS has, uh, their wastewater going through there. That's not something I'm going to immediately know from the data that's available to me. I'd have to dig into your titles. And really, you're the expert on your land. And so when I'm asking for feedback, um, I I want to answer all of your questions about this process, but I'm really looking for your expertise on the properties that you own, the properties that you visit, um, the properties that you're most familiar with because you are the experts on your land. Um, then we'll get into the initial, uh, draft buildable lands inventory. Um, we've shaken the black box and and we've come out with a number, and here it is. Um, and so I'll be looking at that. And I'll also introduce you to the buildable lands, uh, status interactive map. And this is where you can take a deep dive. You can click on every property. It shows you exactly what I have found there at that property. You'll know if it intersects with one of the environmental constraints that we're looking at. You'll know, um, how much buildable land is there. Uh, and you'll be able to understand why I've come to the conclusion that I've come to um, and and make comments on it. You'll notice that on every page, there is a link to the, uh, buildable land survey. And if you click on that link, that's going to allow you to fill out a survey. This comes directly to me. Um, you can ask a general question, or you can submit feedback on a particular tax law. So you can type in the address, type in your feedback, um, let me know if you want to be contacted. Uh, and again, this is on every page, so you'll be able to access that easily. Um, this entire website is on the, uh, community development website for the city of talent. So to navigate to this, you can go to the city's website. You can also Google talent, buildable lands inventory, and you should be able to find it in your search engine. And with that, I'm going to just stop and ask question, uh, ask for questions about the process before I dive in.
I'm gonna move the other end of the room so I can see the.
Yeah, that will be there. Yeah. Uh, I see that there's a, a comment in in chat. Is there? Is there anything that I need to address before I move on?
So you don't.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. With that, I will be reading some of this verbatim. Uh, I think that I did a fairly good job summarizing it. But again, um, I'll be inviting questions to take a deeper dive and to clarify any points. So what is a buildable lands inventory? It aims to establish current conditions within a city and measure how much buildable land exists within a city. This process provides a snapshot of how much development a city currently has and what development can take place, given existing zoning, comprehensive plan designations, and environmental constraints and other development considerations. Now, again, this grant is only for residential lands. We did not look at employment lands. And I'll talk a little bit more about that because now, you know, we we do have rules that allow for residential uses in commercial lands. And I'll talk a little bit about how this is a portion of the building block that can lead to all of this, uh, other studies um, uh, that the city might want to conduct. So Talents need for an updated buildable lands inventory. Talent last conducted a B L I in preparation for the housing needs analysis adopted in 2017. But following the Almeda fire, the buildable conditions in the city have changed. This project will produce a buildable lands inventory consistent with O A R six sixty thirty eight, providing an inventory of residential lands post Almeda fire within talent. This work is critical to understanding what lands remain available for housing recovery, provide guidance for the railroad district feasibility study, and form the basis for a future future housing capacity analysis. The build of the land inventory follows a process defined by Oregon Administrative Rule six sixty thirty eight. It's called the simplified urban growth boundary method. This process allows us to examine talents lands in ways that provide an overall picture about development in talent as well as a tax lot by tax lot examination of what development looks like in the midst of disaster recovery. Project focuses on residential lands only and requires the identification of residential use tax lots, the density of housing on those lands, and the status of development on each property. Uh, so here I've got, uh, a few resources listed for for further reading. If you want to find your adopted housing analysis, you'll find it there along with the administrative rule for the simplified urban growth boundary method. That has some differences with the other, uh, urban growth boundaries. Um, that is the the full version of that. We don't need to to get into the not simple of the differences between uh, a regular U G B amendment and a simplified U G B amendment. Here, it's not applicable. All of the work that is done for doing a residential lands inventory is the same. And the reason that the B L I is part of an urban growth boundary amendment is, like I stated before, it's one of the core building blocks. So we have these processes that we go through, these studies that we do, residential lands, commercial lands, then we go into, uh, housing capacity analysis. And at that point, you as a city can determine, uh, what you want to do with the lands that you have. If there's additional infill, if there's upzoning that can take place to accommodate additional residential lands, or if perhaps an urban growth boundary amendment is needed, you will have all of the building blocks that you need to move through the the regulatory process, starting with this piece here. So go ahead and open it up to any questions before I move on to current conditions. So far, so good. Okay. So the, uh, the guide provides, uh, that I can identify for residential land use by either comprehensive plan designation or zoning. Typically, we use comprehensive plan designation first because first of all, we're looking at the entire urban growth boundary. And of course, there's no zoning outside of your city limits. So you want to have a consistent way of looking at all of your lands. But talent has a couple of different things that make that challenging. Um, and so I have used zoning here, and I explain why. Uh, they're both used to to define residential land use in talent for the purpose of of the B L I. The city of talent defines low, medium, and high density in zoning, but only defines low and high density in its comprehensive plan designations, along with a manufactured home classification, which does not have a density classification. So again, it's really important for me to understand how the density is assigned within the city. And that is a lot clearer in your zoning than it is in your comprehensive plan designation. So the for the purpose of assigning residential use and density, city zoning is used as the primary resource for defining residential use and density. Outside of the urban growth boundary, the comprehensive plan is used to define residential use. And some residential zone tax lots have public use for parks comprehensive plan designations. And these are excluded as buildable residential land. So I I want to point this out because there's a couple of things here. Um, first, we have, um, this area, which of course is the Culver Road, uh, Phoenix Town School District property. I believe the annexation is complete. There. So when I do the update, I will, of course, uh, be expanding this boundary to include that. So I just wanted to note that there is a bit of a difference that has taken place since the time I made this map and now. Uh, but I will be correcting that in future maps. So I wanted to point that out as well as you'll see, this is, um, this is all, uh, talent Phoenix School District here. In your zoning, it is zone residential medium density. And I'm showing it here as residential median density. But you'll see later on that I've taken that out of further consideration because even though the zoning says residential, because of the public use, we're able to take that off the top and say, this is not available currently for residential use, and it's not considered further. So you'll see that area, uh, is removed, and I just wanted to explain that little bit of difference, too. Um, so each buildable land, uh, will have a density status, and it's it has to be categorized as low, medium, or high density residential. These categories are defined by O A R six sixty thirty eight sixty. Generally, for towns' population size, low density is classified again by the state by the O A R. As having a density of eight or fewer dwelling units per acre. For medium density, there are eight to ten dwelling units per acre. An N density higher than 16 dwelling units is considered high density. However, not all residential tax lots fall under these three categories. As mentioned earlier, some tax lots that are zone residential or have a residential comprehensive plan designation are exempt from further consideration in this process. Public facilities, parks, private roadways, roadways, and open space are exempt from consideration. Additionally, any lands that are undevelopable for reasons other than defined environmental or development constraints are also removed. And this is really little stuff, kind of odd stuff, little bits of places that maybe should be in right of way, but aren't necessarily. That just kind of, uh, cleans up some of these unclassified lands. Uh, so that can include roadways or other unusual conditions, uh, not covered in other sections. So this is how the, uh, buildable, uh, land density status looks. We have, uh, quite a lot of, uh, medium density residential. You've got your high density residential here in orange and, uh, low density residential, mostly uh, here in the south, uh, and southwest corners of talent. I'm ready to move on to environmental and development constraints, but I'll take questions before I move forward. Yeah.
Yeah. So I was just kind of wondering about what you said about the comprehensive plan not having the same zoning as our our zoning documents. And is that an inconsistency or?
Um, I wouldn't call it an inconsistency. Both have their strengths. Um, it is a a bit unusual that there's no medium density. It may have been decided at one time that the, um, the residential manufactured home, uh, comprehensive plan designation was in that meeting, then to be residential. Um, but I I'm not sure why those two things are different. One of the things that that we can look at is where differences exist between your zoning and comprehensive plan. And as you move through some of this process, you might want to revisit some of those and, um, just do a little bit of, of, uh, zoning, uh, or, uh, comprehensive plan cleanup. Especially if you're moving towards adopting changes to your comprehensive plan, uh, packaging it all together and moving it through, uh, all at one time. Um, is, you know, gonna gonna be a better use of of everyone's time and resources to to package everything together when you know the goals that you're. Anyone else? Is there a question in chat? Yeah, I don't know if you want me to check these.
I have my hand up. Um, I I apologize. This is Commissioner Volkart. I, uh, I dropped and had to reset internet, and, uh, so I missed that. And I was just following up on Councilor Penamara's comment because I did, I missed that altogether. Um, what was the medium density discrepancy between the comp plan and the map?
Sure. So there there are some differences between I'll I'll go back up here to. Sure, so there are some differences between, I'll go back up here to your comprehensive plan designations and your zoning. And these will be a little bit difficult to visually compare, I'm sure. But there are some differences between your zoning and your comprehensive plan designations that you might want to take a look at overall for some long-term goals in aligning the zoning and comprehensive plan a little bit more streamlined. The thing that I struggled with with the comprehensive plan designations is that you have a residential manufactured home comprehensive plan designation that does not have a functional density. So manufactured home comprehensive plans do not state what the density of those lands should be. And because I need to understand talent's assignment of low, medium, and high-density land use for the purpose of this project, it was important for me to fall back on using zoning primarily to establish residential lands and to establish the density at each of those different density classifications, low, medium, and high. Does that answer that question more fully?
Yeah, thank you. I apologize for having you repeat it.
Not at all, not at all. I'm glad you had.
And then, but let me just follow up with that. But there is, but the the constraints within the manufactured housing, or maybe you're saying there are no constraints as far as, so there is no density? Density isn't addressed in RMH?
In your comprehensive plan designation, the density is not specified for residential manufactured home comprehensive plan designation. Correct.
So it falls back to state standards for building?
Well, we need to understand how talent sees that.
Okay.
And that is outlined nicely in talent's zoning code. And talent's zoning code aligns very well with the threshold set by the state for those low, medium, and high-density figures. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry for the repeat, all right.
No, no, no.
So just addressing that on the planning commission, when we were rezoning or changing the comp plan, we specifically did look at mobile home parks. And because it was one of the most affordable housing forms at that time, and this is long before the Alameda fire, we decided as a group that we did not want to impose the limitations on them so they wouldn't have to change the way, so they wouldn't have to either eliminate or couldn't put in a mobile home because it was affordable. So if we put those densities in there, they would have to build rather than bring in mobile homes. So that's how that was established at that time.
Thank you for that background. There's always a reason. I just don't know it, and it might not always seem immediately apparent, but that's really good background to have and can help inform what happens.
I just want to say for clarification, though, that it wasn't an update to the comp plan. It was just an update to the zoning.
The zoning.
Yeah.
Good to know.
Sorry.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to environmental and development constraints now. As a GIS person, this is where it gets really interesting and really fun. So work with the different types of constraints in talent. There are physical constraints to lands that include environmental constraints and lands under local development restrictions. So within talent, these restrictions include the regulatory floodway, which of course is really Bear Creek and where it, you know, meanders and rises. So properly, the water itself. There's a 35-foot buffer around the regulatory floodway, and that is a talent development standard. The 1% annual chance flood hazard. Again, this is FEMA designated area that used to be known as the 100-year floodway. The local wetlands inventory, talent has an adopted local wetlands inventory that is on file with the Department of State Lands. You also have a 50-foot wetland setback, and that, again, is a local condition in addition to the local wetlands inventory. You have a 50-foot riparian setback measured from the top of banks, again, by talent development code, and slopes of 25% or greater in one acre contiguous area. The map to the right shows these combined areas. And these combined areas are, these combined impacted lands are deducted from buildable areas for each residential tax lot. And the maps that I'm about to show will illustrate each one of those development constraints. So again, we're looking at all of them right now. Counselor, I know you weren't here for this, but I'm waiting until the end of each tab to make questions about the chat that we're on. So you can hold your question for just a moment. Thank you, sir. So the first level here is again those city of talent flood hazards with the regulatory floodway, the annual chance flood hazard, and that 35-foot buffer. The city of talent local wetlands inventory with the 50-foot buffer. The city of talent riparian buffer, which is a 50-foot riparian buffer measured from the top of the bank, and the contiguous one-acre slope of 25% or more. So this is an interesting one because the way that we do this, we look at slopes and how quickly they rise, and so we measure that by percent. And it's a very fine-grained analysis. So you end up with all of the slope along roadways. It becomes kind of noisy. And the way that DLCD decided to deal with some of this noise that isn't really meaningful for our analysis is to say that we need to measure only those slopes that connect with each other continuously for at least one acre. So everything that you're seeing that covers and is connected to at least one acre of land. You still see a bit of the noise in there along the railroad and along certain waterways. But generally, the slope that we're dealing with is something that everyone's very well aware of here at the south and southwest corner of talent. And so with that, Counselor, let's see them. So that's the, that's the one, it used to be known as the one.
So what I'm wondering, is that really exclusive to building or it just had to build above base flood?
So I think one of the things that you might be thinking about is the .2 special floodway. And that is the 500-year that's, it shows in orange on FEMA maps. This does not so that. This is only the floodway and the 1% annual chance flood hazard. According to the regulatory guidance, anything in the 1% annual chance flood hazard can be removed 100%. It's not, and this brings up a really good point of what the buildable land inventory does not do. This does not become a talent regulatory guide. This does not say you can't build here. So when we're looking at that 1% annual chance flood hazard, this is some of the stuff that you were dealing with in rebuilding. In the floodplain, that larger area of floodplain, but it's not necessarily a complete development restriction. However, the guidance from this OAR does state that we can remove this link entirely from development consideration because of its presence within the 1% annual chance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that actually reminds me that I don't know that the 1% was included in previous editions of the environmental constraints. I don't think that it was. That was something that I.
Thanks, Nikki, for that. So I know that there is some development in the floodplain currently. And so if we were to remove any floodplain for consideration, and I can understand why that would be an advantage, especially if we're interested in annexing. Would that have any detrimental effect for those? Two questions. Would it have any detrimental effects for those who are already developed? And then by removing it, does that also say that it cannot be developed? Or is it just for the purpose of counting the inventory?
Yeah, these are excellent questions. So it only says that from this analysis, we don't have to move, we don't have to move to the building. But it has no bearing whatsoever on what people can do on that one. That is, that is entirely in the guidance of talent's regulatory code. Right? So that's a really important point, Nikki, and I'm glad that you brought that up because one of the things this does not do is supersede anything involving talent's building or land use code. If I've said that some things will be developed, that does not mean that you can't come in and visit and say, hey, I'm interested in putting a second unit on my property. What this says about your property is that it is as built out as the state expects it to be. But what you can do with your land is a lot more, a lot more complicated and will involve talent code. So this definitely does not make a rule about what you can and cannot do with your land. These would never get done if that were the case. I would make sweeping decisions about how your city looks, and that's definitely not me. So I really would say. Thanks. So I've gone through local wetlands, the slopes. We put all of these together so that I'm only deducting them from the lands one time. So rather than go through and remove all of the riparian area and then remove all of the floodway area in order to make sure I'm only deducting the lands once, I put it all together in one, excuse me, scary red layer, and then I deduct it from the land. And this is all calculated out later, and you'll see where this comes into play. So everything in red gets removed 100%. But what I want to talk about is, for example, you see this land right here. It's all within some kind of environmental or and/or development constraint. So nothing is buildable here. This is going to show up as developed. Actually, this is commercial, so this was a bad example, but it's big enough to see on your screen. So. But in other places, this red area is only going to encroach a little bit on land. So what do we do with that? Well, I only take the portion of the land that is impacted. So if you have a one-acre piece of property, and there is .2 acres of environmental constraints, I'm only going to look at that .80 acres that is left over because I know that that .20 is constrained already. Okay, and that covers environmental and development constraints. Are there any additional questions before I move on to the draft?
Yeah, we're not, we're not taking speaker requests. We don't have a speaker request form at this meeting. Was that from you, Nadia? Yeah. So we'll just not kicking questions on chat or taking questions during the meeting.
Yeah, I will take a moment, though, to point out that the website that we're going, that we're looking at right now is available from the talent community developer page. It's also searchable by talent buildable land inventory. And on each of these tabs, there is a link to a buildable land survey. And you can click on that and provide feedback about specific sites that you see. You can ask questions. You can read all about this from the website. Okay?
It's also helpful to know that once we get past that exception, and it goes into the phases of adoption, it goes to a public hearing and literally we'll be hearing from the public at that time. Yeah.
Okay, so moving to the draft buildable lands inventory. So in the previous steps, we've established residential land use. We've measured the impacts of environmental and local development constraints. And then the next step measures existing development by the presence or absence of homes. So for each home present on a tax lot, one quarter of an acre is deducted from the developable acreage. If more than one quarter acre remains after housing and constrained lands are removed, the tax lot is considered partially vacant. If less than a quarter acre remains after housing and constrained lands are removed, the tax lot is considered developed. If the tax lot has no housing present and has more than a half an acre, I'm sorry, a quarter acre available for development after constraints are removed, it is considered vacant. So let me use an example. So let's take that acre of land that we have. And let's say that there is a half an acre that is environmentally constrained. Now we're only working with a half an acre potentially buildable land. Then we discover our houses on it. So I take another quarter acre off, but we still have a quarter acre available. That initial one-acre parcel of land, even though it's environmentally constrained and already has a house on it, is considered partially vacant. And we count that one quarter acre as available for development. Chair Riley brought up an excellent question in one of the earlier sessions. She said, why a quarter of an acre? That house would be giant, right? I don't, maybe there's homes in Eastland or in East Medford. Talking back to my Eastland. Any Medford that is that big. But we don't have anything that's, you know, 40,000 square feet. Right here in talent. The reason for that is that the state considers that what's called a safe harbor. And a quarter of an acre is a typical small lot that's going to allow you to have a driveway, a garage, a single-family home, and maybe, you know, an outfielding. It's just sort of one of those easy-to-measure minimum land areas that we consider a safe harbor, a safe number for development. Now let's say that quarter of an acre that's actually empty is in your backyard. And your driveway and your house take up all of the space, and there's no way you can get a driveway to go back to that house. There's no way you could get even, you know, construction materials back there. That's another place that you, as homeowners, as landowners, as business owners, can come in and say, I tried to figure out a way to build this, but I would have to demolish a third of my house just to get construction materials back there. That's something that I tried to account for by looking at recent imagery. But if I haven't captured it correctly, that's another area where residents can be immensely helpful to come in and say, hey, I asked the city if I could build an ADB back there. We just can't make it work. I've got fence setbacks with my neighbors. I got, you know, all kinds of different things going on. Can't be done. So I won't always capture those 100% correctly, and that's really helpful feedback to have. Um, let's see. So there are additional considerations that may not be fully captured within the standard BLI analysis. And talent remains in recovery from the Alameda fire of 2020. And the conditions of recovery complicate the buildable land status of some residential tax lots because you might not have a house there right now, but maybe there's a building permit in review. Maybe someone has purchased the land and is partitioning it. There's some sort of land use permit that is in review. So I have identified each tax lot that has not been rebuilt either set whether or not it has any kind of land use or building permit action on it. And I have marked that as a thought. It is at any point in recovery. If it is at any point in recovery, anyone has come in and start going through the permitting process to build on that property. I am considering it developed. That's something that the state code doesn't address, but it's one of those tricky situations where we have to come in. And we have to do a little bit more careful analysis. Now I finished the buildable lands inventory. In, it was late winter. So there's definitely going to be some things that you might identify right away. Oh, hey, I know that's rebuilt, that's my property. Or areas in the process of rebuilding. It might not be something I, I was able to capture because I, I haven't looked at that permit data in a couple of months. When I move through the next phase and I'm finalizing everything, I'll take a fresh look at all your permits and I'll make sure that all of that is captured. Okay, yes.
Is it the right time to ask?
Yes, go ahead. I just have a look at some of this, but there's a better map of this than interactive, so, but go ahead.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a little bit confused about parcels and tax lots. The example you gave was really good for describing what would happen with a large parcel. I'm thinking of a neighborhood with, where they're a lot smaller than a quarter of an acre. Right?
Yeah.
So I, so one question is, how do you, how do you, how do you figure that out?
Yes, that's a great question. So anytime I had a, a, a small tax lot, you know, and, and we saw, I think some of the smaller ones are like point twelve or point fifteen. When I saw that something was really close, when I saw that it was, you know, something that was impacted by the fire. And wasn't necessarily in recovered status, didn't have any permit. I marked that as vacant. Because even though the state standard says quarter of an acre above buildable, quarter of an acre below, not buildable. We want to match both the letter and the spirit of the regulatory guidance. And it would not be clear, it wouldn't be accurate to take all of those smaller parcels out. So I have included those as vacant or developed or part twelve, there's no part twelve vacant, it's better that's wrong. But so you'll see a scattering of those smaller lots marked as vacant. And again, those might be in some sort of recovery status that I just haven't captured yet, but yeah, the point, yeah.
So that's, thanks, and that's my question, there's like a ton of those. Uh, my second question is, you talked about, you know, homeowners coming in saying, oh, actually this is buildable or there isn't build. I'm not sure what incentive I would have as a, as a homeowner or a landowner to come and. Set you straight.
Yeah.
How much is going on with my lot since it's not regulatory or anything? I'm just wondering. Whether folks will do that, what, what's the incentive and? And what happens if they don't?
Um, nothing happens if they do, except that my data gets better and we have a more accurate picture of the city and what's on it and what's still full and what's not. There's probably not a great deal of incentive beyond, you know, public participation and community effort. And there's, there's absolutely no kind of consequence for it, you know, it doesn't correct it. So that's a really interesting question, I haven't thought of it that way before.
Just do a pry.
Yeah. I like that one. Okay. Um, so this, this map is going to show you this, this draft buildable land status. And we'll get into the interactive portion, which I find easier to use and interact with and, and tell what's going on. But mostly you can get a pretty good picture here of what is happening. Anything in red, anything in blue, anything shaded out in gray. Those are all developed or unbuildable for various reasons described through this process. Whatever is green is vacant, I do expect again, some of those to fill in. When I did this, I, I knew there was kind of coming in the pipeline for development. But, um, so, so some of those will go away as well. Um, and the, the orange areas here, this is not going to be a big shock to anyone. You live here, you know what development is happening and where and what's not being developed. And so what you're going to see is that most of the partially vacant land. Is in the railroad district area. Much of it is outside of the city limits in the UGV. There is some that is inside of the UGV. But the vast majority of acre to acre, what is available, regardless that it's vacant or partially vacant. Is in the railroad district. Um, so just addressing this feedback mechanism here. Should you or additional residents decide to participate. City staff, stakeholders, residents, business officials, elected officials are invited to review and provide feedback. Together we improve the accuracy. But other, other than that, there might not be any real apparent incentive to participate. But I'm very fond of having things correct and you can help me make those, those things more accurate. And so I do appreciate your feedback and your review of the work. Um, so there is this draft buildable lands inventory, again, available on each page. And specifically from this page, you can navigate to it. And I know I've covered a lot, especially, you know, taking out all of the different parts and pieces of this. Are there any additional questions before I move into the interactive map portion?
I'm just wondering, did you take into consideration accessibility? Like if, because I'm familiar with someone who was thinking of developing. Close to an acre of his property. And he has a right of way that's wide enough, but the apron requirement he thinks he can't meet.
So that's a really, that's a really good question because it kind of transcends into this area of. Infrastructure impracticability. Um, so I'll, I'll go ahead and address that there for certain constraints. Like I, I kind of gave an example of, we've got a fence setback, this, that, and the other thing. You're not able to get anything built on that property if you've been through the process. And there's just no way to get something built there for whatever reason. Whether it be fence setback or riparian issue or an apron or, you know, you've got a piece of land that is completely landlocked by your neighbors. You have no easements for access. Those things can absolutely be taken out as developed. Taken out as partially vacant or vacant and marked as developed, sorry about that. Um, because there are local development constraints that prevent that from happening. So that is, and that is part of an infrastructure constraint. Impracticable, there's no way to safely get a vehicle on and off that property. What this will not do is take a huge swath of land. That is already in your UGV. And make a decision that it is unbuildable due to infrastructure impracticability. So it would not be within my power or interests to use the BLI to make decisions about your railroad district. There is a portion of UGV that does address situations like this. But it is not for buildable land inventories and it's not for a UGV process that isn't looking at priority lands. A priority lands analysis happens when you do not have. Urban reserve areas. If you don't have urban reserve areas, one of the things that you can do is you can go through a priority lands analysis. You look at all of the lands outside of your city limits. And you decide based on a series of rules, what is and is not appropriate for development. And that'll be things like looking for, you know, forests, like, and things like this. Things that aren't necessarily of priority usually for the state to say, yeah, it's a great place for an urbanized area to save. And one of the things that, that, that we'll look at is infrastructure impracticability. And those are going to be really big things, like you can't get water there, you can't get a road there. Really large development constraints. But again, that has nothing to do with this buildable lands inventory. These are measured from within your existing UGV. It does not, it, it's not appropriate for any kind of UGV amendment that has to do with. A, a city that already has urban reserve areas. That really is only if you're extending out and looking at other areas to expand. Because of other constraints. So this is one thing I am not going to be looking at, I have to feedback about. About the buildability of some of the partially vacant lands in your railroad district. But that's not something that I can take and say, this is developed because of an issue with capacity of the railroad. That's not moving that, I. Okay? Uh, so here is the buildable lands status interactive map. And so basically this takes everything that you just saw in that static map and it makes it interactive. And so we can get really close in on any property that is residential. And has a buildable lands status attached to it. You can also click on it and you're going to get a pop-up that's going to bounce around. There we go. And it's going to have all of the information about that particular type of. Ownership, zoning, comprehensive plan designation, how large the acre is. Does it intersect with any of those environmental constraints or development constraints that we talked about? If so, you're going to have a number here of how many acres were deducted from those environmental constraints. You're going to have a residential density question. Low density, you're going to have, how many acres are developed with housing? There's a point, you know, two, five acres, a quarter of an acre per unit. And the draft BLI status is partially vacant. And we've got point four acres that are available for development. So let me just quick over that math again. We've got point six five acres of lands total. A quarter of an acre is developed out because we've got one house on it. And so according to this analysis, we have point four left over. Now, when I'm calculating this and saying, how much land is available for development? I'm not counting this as that point six five, I'm only counting the point four zero. Does that make sense? So I'm taking out what's already built and I'm no longer. So this is something that you can play around with and interact with and, and click on and ask all kinds of questions about, about different parts of the city. What it is and what it looks like. Um, there are some that I made some comments on because I, you know, I've taken another look at it and said, ooh, I don't. This is partially vacant, but that fence is really close to the house and I don't think this is going to work. Um, so I might have made a decision one way or another when things weren't quite clear. And I made sure to catalog my notes on that when, when I made those types of decisions. So what are the magic numbers that we're at right now? And again, I, I wanted to make sure that folks know that these figures are preliminary. They will change a bit from between now and the time that we move again. But probably not a ton. Tax lots by land use classification, so this is overall, this is everything that's in Talon regardless of if it's built, not built. Vacant, whatever, this is your full land area. You have nine hundred and seventy-one residential medium density tax lots. That makes up forty-four percent of your land area. And then so on and so forth, six hundred and sixty-one. Uh, high density, thirty percent, followed by low density, point of lands. The low, medium and high density residential developable lands. Now this is boils everything down, if you're just looking at your residential lands. Is it low density, medium density or high density? You have a hundred acres that are low density. Again, that's not a big surprise because all of that land in the railroad district. Uh, that is partially vacant, that's all low density residential. High density, you've got a ten, eleven acres. I expect this to change, there were a couple of high density parcels that were just on the cusp of entering into the permitting system when last I saw this. So I expect this number to go down. And then medium density, three point eight acres of medium density residential. How does this all break down? So most of the tax lots in Talon are fully developed, that are residential. You've got forty that are partially vacant and eighty-two that are vacant. But that number, that, that whole number of acres is pretty small. You've got thirteen, fourteen acres that are vacant, even though they're spread across eighty-two tax lots. But it's a lot of, a lot of small tax lots. So again, not a big surprise from the map. So we've seen earlier, you're partially vacant, is that low density residential in, in the railroad district. And that concludes. So I'm opening it up for questions, it's not only about this, but for other many I may have missed, questions about what's next. I would like to touch briefly on that building block idea again. This is, you know, one piece, it's a really, really important piece of all of these other steps that you as a city can decide to do. Doing an employment lands analysis, now that we have the residential land analysis is really easy. Because you know exactly what you're looking for, whatever you didn't look at before, you're going to look at now. So getting this out of the way and doing this, the employment lands is, is a really simple process to do from here. You'd want to do that as part of a housing capacity analysis. Again, you would attack that question of, you know, what can we do with our commercial lands for residential capacity? That would be answered in, in your HCA. You'd want to take a look at your comprehensive land, decide if you want to take some changes there. This revisiting zoning, make sure everything is nice and cleaned up. Uh, and then move through the UGV process to decide if that's, that you want to do as a city or not. But that, yeah.
So this doesn't include any like joint, uh, commercial residential availability?
Right, no, this is, this is very clearly delineated, just residential. And it does get a bit messy where, you know, commercial and residential uses are a bit mixed in. So this type of analysis typically can miss little bits of that. I do try to capture it, but there's not a lot in Talon. So I didn't spend a terrible lot of time making sure that all of that was considered. Because you might have, you know, a, a. I lived above my parents' shop in a little small town in, in Michigan for years and it wouldn't capture that type of living arrangement. But that's a really small piece of it that isn't going to change the, the metrics either way.
Thank you.
So then what is the employment land that you're talking about?
Yeah, so the employment land is going to be anything that is zone commercial or industrial. So all of your, let's see, the commercial, central business district, highway, central business, highway, commercial. Commercial interchange neighborhood and the industrial zone. So we would be taking a look at all of this land here. To look at all of the, the commercial zones. And that, the employment lands you do for, for a full housing capacity analysis. That includes an employment analysis as well. And, and that's good to do all together so that you can answer these broader types of questions. How much land do we have, how much land do we need? And where do we go if we don't have that?
I thought you were just addressing residential land.
I am, I am, in, in this residential. Lands analysis, yes, but the next step could be to look at employment lands. And because, or yeah, employment lands, because now residential uses are allowed in commercial zones. And that makes it a little more complicated to look at, you know, all of the different housing options in Talon. But that would be appropriate to do your employment land so that you know even what's available, what's not built out. And then with a housing capacity analysis to get. And then with the housing capacity analysis to get any paradise in that. I guess, sorry if that was unfair.
So I'm I'm guessing the answer to this is no, but I'm wondering if there's any economic dimension to this. And I was trying to think about a way you might be able to do it, like uh maybe just like seeing how long um a piece of land has been vacant. If there's a trend of just not having a lot of development um in an area. So. I I'm thinking that that this was not part of your analysis, but I was wondering, is it ever talked about or is there another study that looks at that sort of thing?
Um when you do a market analysis for the housing capacity analysis, it will take into consideration those types. Of questions, but for the billable land inventory, no, it doesn't take a look at that. But this, it's a great use of this type of data because of course we capture um all kinds of information. And can look at when the property was last sold and for how much, like that, if a property is.
Yeah, and I, a follow-up on that housing capacity analysis. So um at the state level, you know, I've heard them talk about. Taking a more regional approach um to the housing problem and stuff like that. So um some of us were through, went through the housing needs analysis. Um process and U G B and all of that. Um familiar with that. How, how, do you have any ideas? How would you expect a housing capacity analysis um to be different?
Um so they, they, the state has released uh regional housing capacity analysis. Um it is my understanding, and this is not a final word on this because that's outside of of what I'm doing here. But um for a U G B, I believe there has to be a local adopted. Housing capacity analysis. Um and the last H N A, I think. From twenty seventeen, did it find a deficiency in housing then or was it kind of on the cusp? I.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm looking at the mayor nodding now.
There was a deficiency then. So the anticipated outcome of a new H C A is not much different. Um than what it was in the past. The metrics will obtain a little bit. There are new dynamics because of the fire. Um but the end result, the needle has done.
I have a question for Gary. Um you can see in the gray area, the light industrial land that's designated and and really kind of. Strangely in the midst of a lot of housing. And I mean, you can, history, it's not so strange. But in today's times, it could, it could be perceived that way. Um so if we were to complete this process and find. Um that there was a uh deficiency of housing that could uh could. Could, would the benefit of be uh of doing the commercial lands inventory as well as part of this project? Allow us to look at the light industrial land for potential for. Um if there's an excess of light, light industrial and not enough housing, the potential for. Uh changing some of the zoning in the light industrial, would that be a logical step to take?
No.
I think that that actually would be answered in the economic analysis. The spilt portion of that would inform that. But you'd have to do uh an analysis of um of how much industrial we're going to. And so that would be part of that economic analysis. See, employment land inventory would be part of that. But you want to do that economic analysis piece of it to understand if you have enough industrial already. What is the market demand for that here? Do you have enough? And um if not, you know, well, if you have too much, um then you can definitely look at your options there. An interesting piece of this is that you'll, you'll notice that um the the ball parts are uh within uh light industrial. Um so the the plan for that, even though, you know, it's it's parks use. And and I would be real tempted to take this, that piece of it out of the employment lands because it's hard to use. Um but we can, we can definitely take a closer look.
There's also uh acreage, there's also acreage across the, across Rogue River Way there that um.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's considerable land in that area as well. And um I say, I I think it's important to put it on everybody's radar. That doesn't have history uh because T A four, um T A four is. Uh if my memory serves me right, is eighty percent light industrial or and and it's employment land.
It's employment.
Yeah, right. So um so if we do an analysis. Um that shows that we have an excess of light industrial, which when we last did, we, I think we, we ended up with about an acre and a half after Williams Way was filled. Um of ex, of excess. Um bringing in T A four will exacerbate that. Um and uh so I would hope that as a city, we would look at the light industrial we have within. The city uh more walkable, probably equally walkable to services. Uh before we, before we exacerbate it with T A four. Um I just think it's something that. We should talk about as as part of this long-range process. And I just want for those who haven't been part of the history of this. Put that on your radar.
I I would wonder um if the park area was included in that industrial lands analysis. And if there was a study done um with this portion that is outside. Um or on the other side of the railroad. So I would, we should kind of take a deep dive and see if that. If the industrial lands were the complete, you know, industrial area.
Yeah, I would.
Because that would change things a lot. If we're, if we're looking at this land and saying, you know, we really aren't gonna do anything aside from parks. And we'd wanna remove that out. If we were looking at this land and saying, you know, there's not much that can be done. Because we've got to share the railroad.
Right.
Um we would probably wanna remove that from a real in-depth, you know, analysis of industrial lands. And then you would just be looking at this area here.
Yep.
And there's the other question of if you do bring in anything in your U R As. Um you know, how do we leverage the, the, you know, ability to build? You know, multi-use and and residential and commercial lands. So I don't think, you know, we can say that. It would just be brought in as commercial and it would um compound, you know, of an existing problem. If there's the opportunity to build residential in, you know, T A five or T A four.
Which I think just i- in a different way. Makes it as important to to look at that before we.
Yeah.
Before we move forward.
Yeah, yeah. We should, we should take a look at that and and talk about, you know, what the plan is.
I'm not so interested in the park. I mean, if if the park compounded the numbers, I, you know, of course, it it will play. But there's so much available land across the way there, not, not across the railroad tracks, but across Rogue River Way. That. Um it makes, it makes sense to evaluate that as potential for housing. Especially since it's such, because of its proximity to bus lines and walkable to a park. I mean, there's a million, there's a lot of really good reasons to look at that.
Yeah, so I think it looks like um what we're talking about is this here, uh town lease. This building, there's um, there's, it looks like available lands here and then. I don't, I don't think there's anything here in this land here.
It's the, it's the piece, the last piece that you looked at, but I think obviously generally the biggest opportunity. It's accessible. Um it's a large piece. I think there's an additional, I think it's altogether something like four acres. And um like I said, its connectivity to services are pretty amazing.
Yeah, that's definitely something that that we can look at um for component plans and um ten M P A.
Right. I also think that if that were multifamily housing, which seems inappropriate, it will help us sell the fabricating blocks. That property, it is all one, it's all one lot.
Yes, it would make sense.
Uh how, just one uh thing, the housing capacity analysis, so will tell you, you know.
What, what type?
Yeah, and and that'll kind of bring everything together and I, you know, I, again, I don't think we're gonna have any surprises. We need that, you know, we need density and high density.
Yeah, I saw the graph.
Yeah, so.
Um and that's high density next to it too, so.
Yeah, so an appropriate place for it. But that, that will say, you know, that will help us to say, we've got this much land available. We are considering, you know, rezoning this and um using it for residential and it's gonna open up that capacity. Does that now cover our, you know, twenty year horizon? Sorry, Gary.
You know, the uh available lands inventory. There's a high number that you mentioned for available acreage primarily in the railroad district. Have you interacted with the other consultant who's doing the railroad district study?
Yeah, I have provided them with this website. I provided them um with the draft of. Uh what, what is available. So I, I have not talked to them about it. I'm certainly available for them to to call. They do have my contact information. Um I've provided them with a number of, of other G I S. Uh features layers for.
I'm just wondering if the two studies intersect at some point, uh which I think would have, one of the outcomes might have a significant.
Yeah, absolutely. I hope that that this is useful for them um when they are um doing the feasibility study. And uh so I I did provide it to them, but I I haven't interacted with them yet.
I'm sorry, which other study you're talking about? I missed what you said.
Oh, the railroad district.
Oh, the railroad, okay, thanks.
And Gary, I don't know where we're at. I think the railroad district study is gonna tell us more. Just, just out of curiosity, the, the piece that is on the other side of the. Um the railroad tracks, that's light industrial. Um and I, I, I do, I do know that there are constraints with the railroad crossing on rap. But they're not the same as they are elsewhere.
Yes.
And um and and I even think we, did we develop a. A conceptual plan for the upgrades to that as part of our emergency recovery? It seems to me like we did.
I don't know.
And um so again, for those who don't have the history of this, I think it's. Worth putting on the back burner a discussion at some point in time, whether that's more appropriate as light industrial. Or uh or if there's an excess of light industrial and not enough housing as a result of the studies. Is that an appropriate place to look for? Uh as a re-designation of housing. Um I, I think those are discussions actually that have been floating around our city for as long as I can remember. And um. Be interesting to look at it again. Which I really appreciate the fact that you brought up looking at commercial analysis as well for that, because I think it has that purpose. Among the other purposes that you mentioned.
Yeah, really. I remember you, we, we had a, we had, yes, and you were like, what about the commercial? And I said, ah, I'm gonna have to be ready for that. So, thank you.
It was over a glass of wine, right?
Might have been. Uh again, I am um available to uh to talk to. You can um. Always reach out to Nick. Um I'll make sure to see, communicate on any communications that we have. So that he stays in the loop about this project. Um our contact information is at the bottom of the page. Um so you can can find us easily. Again, navigate to the um. City of talent, the development website, you'll be able to find them. Are there any kind of questions before I lose my voice?
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Oh, I did one, one question. I, I've been, it's been sitting on my head for the whole meeting. Is, so this is all interactive and it's a living document. So is there a plan in place to keep it updated?
Um so what I will do is when I move into the final phase, I'll be taking feedback. Uh I'll be making sure to provide that feedback and say that so that, you know, who commented what. Um that will all be part of uh the final deliverables that I give to you. Um I will be changing the billable lands interactive map to show the final um results. But I will preserve the draft as well. So there will be a draft preserved in your G I S. Um as well as the finals. And so this will always live in town's G I S system. I built it inside of your system. This isn't mine. You have to log into the town uh G I S system to access and change it. So it's preserved, it's yours in perpetuity. Um it's something that, you know, I'll, I'll take with me just here down the road that Michigan is something.
You know, I realize it's just assumed we'd be adopting this at some point. If that dictates, will we? Yeah, okay, good. Cause I, I don't wanna. Have, I'll have to get an area call if I'm.
You um, you, you may wait to adopt the B L I as part of H C A. Um because if you adopt the B L I, you might be looking at it kind of as a planned update as well. And you might wanna kind of look at the, the steps and see how to bundle things appropriately to make sure that it moves as quickly as. As possible.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just say that I'm surprised because I know that in practice, when we make changes to the zoning, we make a comprehensive plan amendment at the same time. So I'm a little bit wondering if maybe there was just some sort of uh, things got out of sync um document wise.
Uh with the, with zoning and.
Yeah, I know there was a lot of attention, zoning and maybe just some updates that perhaps were approved. Just didn't make it into the electronic document or something like that.
Or there's a very good reason for things that. Nine cents out of ten. There's a really good reason that it's the way that it is, but isn't readily apparent, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're gonna be moving on for the planning commission for the title seventeen eighteen discussion. So we're gonna be moving on to the title seventeen eighteen discussion for planning commission.
Okay.
Probably not.
Yeah, no funding is allocated. The retention services, contract force, and some part of estimate. Uh and there are a number of active things now, like the little lands inventory, the road registry. So I didn't use the one, and planning the whole effect that as well, didn't get incorporated. Has a current change as well, too. But I propose that kind of modite in-house approach in the new. Of seventeen eighteen. Um that was to, together a core team. Uh consisting of uh Timmy Clark as the team leader, we see the bossess. Uh with Nick, um um somebody else that I believe, um Jelena, the goal, we do a new. So we engineer, and it's all this and all this. About, uh, one of the people there, the county, one member of the primary and one member of the council. Certainly, it's a part of that team, could be lost. Uh, but I have to see your mind. That will provide a quarterly reply, which is that I currently do see signs of a deal, there's some of it. Uh, in the way that it's there. And that adds me that we can bring in other passengers. Uh, there are other leaders or repot that were doing their own work for the school. They have the presentation things that they have the medical resources language that uh we can have resources from the San Francisco, the architecture, the committee, the management use attorney. Consultants that worked on the man's housing contract, the middle district, now the related studies, it's contributed or something. I bring in the county bill, and we're looking at office, uh, terms in the same region. Engaged in the comparison, our partnership divisions encourage, uh, great and weak, which is the only thing that's going. If you know, like, so this, the whole, so this is, we did that. And the public side, and then please. The office later, but like, turn it around in the whole side, and there, the part.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have the farmers, you know, which is new more. It might be produced three to twelve, particularly in the area of food. It's uh, there's a lot of areas. There's code force sort of, and much of these types of involved.
Yes.
Um, that that has been very short time, and they're killing them. And then, you know, sort of also nice creates some, use for children, meaning that code force begins and then the current, and the difficulty that, when it was office and chat, and find the time doing their case, the many of the things of the of the standards and cut. Uh, to be really challenging sometimes, uh to define what the term is to do. That is certainly used that process and look at this. Uh, uh, just thought it more after we started in Seattle and let them, in the industry, they do. I thought it should have gone a little better about, yeah. Probably all the way to do it, so um.
I like the idea. I just want to talk a little bit about technically what what this committee would be. So it sounds to me like it's like a technical advisory committee. Is that what you have in mind?
In a way.
Yeah. And then um, and what, what would be the outcome of this advisory committee? Would they prepare a draft document that brings the planning commission?
Yes.
Planning commission would review it and adopt it or a review, review it and recommend it. And um, uh, and so it would be an advisory committee to the planning commission. It sounds like a technical advisory committee to the planning commission.
So it's only about four to go for uh, for consideration after the committee, we didn't see. I think it works, yeah, we put it on the table. Well, we, we gave the land, which is, I wanted some of these people to clarify that we're, we can be a little bit of a student. My Shandell, very well.
How come, Amara?
Oh. Yeah, so uh, I I do think this is a good idea. One concern I might have would be staff capacity, but obviously a lot of that and and its go. Um, I'm just remembering back when we had, uh, I think Elizabeth Decker uh work on this for us. There were, there were two things that were um positive about having, having a consultant. One was, I think it was with Grant um from DLC. Um, the other thing that I think that a consultant can bring is just the idea of um having had experience in in other cities um in Oregon and kind of being really up to speed on the latest uh from the state. So those were two things that um were seen as positives at the time of going with the consultants. Um, so I just wanted to mention those.
I I think uh what comes to mind is that uh we might want to think about assembling this group as a technical advisory to RV cog, to Shandell. Um, because if we, if we create a technical advisory committee for planning, then it's subject to the appointment policy. And then the appointment policy opens up applications to community members at large. And which is, which is not a bad thing. It's just that for technical advisory, what you're, what you're talking about is putting together uh a group of people with particular expertise in this area for a draft that eventually comes before the commission anyway. So um I like the idea, we just, I just, we should probably talk about how to how to form this advisory committee in a way that is really a technical advisory to either staff or a technical advisory to um, yeah, to our contractor at RV cog. Rather than just forming another committee su- subject to the charter, basically. Yeah. Which technical advisories are usually typically built up, so just so you know.
Could this be something you can on the next agenda?
That one on the next agenda. You know. So I want to put it on a little more. Uh, who wants to come by?
Well, if it were, I mean, if you hear again, I mean, if it were a, if it were a committee that was being um developed or being, if it was an advisory to the planning commission, it would have to come to the uh council first because it's according to the charter, that's our purview. Uh, but if you're going to assemble a technical advisory committee, I don't even know that you need to have, you don't even need to have an approval. I mean, it might be good just to report it to a meeting um and get consent just for good housekeeping. But um advisory committees to staff and consultants are not, don't go through the regular appointment process. Yeah, and the charter spells it out and the appointment policy spells that out. So um, yeah.
All right. I want to put it on a little more, just a summary. Uh, and uh, we're going. I'll wait until Shandell is back, from the bird, that.
I think it's a great idea.
Good.
Thank you. I just would make one last comment on that. For technical advisory, uh, I would say, so that we're not just circumventing our normal policy. That we'd be defining the technical advisory as an advisory to staff, but also of technical experts in this, in this area. Couple of planning commissioners, couple of counselors that have planning experience, I would hope. And then uh, and then the rest of the advisors are somehow associated with somehow associated with planning. Yeah, so they, so we're not just trying to circumvent the appointment policy.
Yeah, I I think that's right. I think that I found it very, very helpful uh in the last period, so I got a list of how uh, Helen Floyd, who just had some twenty years, there was a panel there. He was uh, he had a place to deliver applications, and so I commanded some questions also to the live. I thought the council on the planning. So very just, uh, doing folks on the team, but the bar, which is still, thank you.
So that, I think that's where I'm, I think that's what I'm saying is that if we're looking for community perspective, I think that does subject it to the the policy. But I, we can have further discussion and maybe we should touch base with Dave on this a little bit. But I mean, if we're looking for community perspective, if that's what we want, then then there is a process laid out in the charter for that, and we should probably follow. But if we're looking for a technical advisory committee to assemble a draft to bring before the bodies uh for approval, I think that's a different matter.
Mm-hmm.
And it makes sense to me because it sort of cuts, it it, it really is the 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 technical replacement of a technical consultant. Like, to me, it's apples and apples to some degree. Yeah.
I think we could hear your.
We'll both do it, go ahead.
One, two, three, go.
Hey, the one thing, um, the one thing I would ask.